Okay, welcome everybody to the Tuesday, December the 10th, 2019 work session. As you may or may not know, we use speaker cards if you plan on speaking on citizen comments or any items that are on this agenda. I would ask that you get those to me now because if you start bringing them up in the heart of the meeting, you're going to be disappointed. So now is your chance. And so next item on the agenda is an opportunity for citizen comments. And I have three cards. Holly McCall, Howard Garrett, and Justin Canoe. And I would ask you come up to the podium in that order and go ahead and start coming up. And I'm going to allow you two minutes. And that two minutes is about to start.
Good evening, good ladies and gentlemen. I'm Holly McCall of 158 Franklin Road in Franklin. I wanted to address the draft ordinance of the Freedom of Assembly, or at least where one can assemble. And I've already spoken to several of you, but I know not all of you have had the chance to hear my concerns about that. I just urge you to tread very carefully as you go forward. I urge you to go over and beyond with having public hearings. I know there's nothing that says you have to have a public hearing on this, but given that there is nothing more dear to either constitutional conservatives or progressives than the First Amendment, I think it's vital that you do go over and beyond and have an open public hearing for people to say whatever is on their minds. As you know, the First Amendment guarantees five freedoms: speech, press, religion, petition, and assembly. And thus far, this is the only one that we are considering putting a permit on, Freedom of Assembly. That is all I have. I just ask you to consider this very carefully going forward. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Howard Garrett. I live at 1134 McKay's Court. And I wanted to piggyback on Holly. I think it's important, and I encourage you guys to consider this as well. I think it's important as a community that we thrive upon hearing the different voices of our community and hearing concerns that are deeply within people's hearts. And restricting people to voice those concerns is very discouraging, especially as a young person. I thrive on ensuring that the community that I reside in here, here's what I have to say because at the end of the day, I am a resident, and we should have the opportunity for our voices to be heard. And we are very, as a diverse community, we have many different opinions, many different voices, and I think that's what makes a community great. And I think as a community, we should be very careful and very sensitive and be aware of the different voices and the concerns of our citizens' souls. Thank you so much for your time and have a great night.
How are you? I'm Justin Canoe. I'm at 6605 Edgemore Drive. I too share the concerns about the ordinance that seeks to regulate the right to peaceable assembly here in Franklin. I'm not here to question anybody's motives. Pastor Riggs and I had the opportunity to sit down with Eric Stuckey and Mayor Moore to discuss this, and I do believe your motivation with this is public safety. I don't question anyone's hearts. But any type of permitting system will by nature have a chilling effect on expression. And I worry what happens if the power of an ordinance like this falls into the hands of those who do seek to stifle free speech. In your discussion last week, Alderman Barnhill started to wonder if 25 was maybe too high a number and maybe smaller groups should be regulated, while Bev Berger worried about people showing up too often and used the word nuisance in the paper. What's not, what is not a nuisance to one may be a nuisance to the next. And I ask you that what if Martin Luther King Jr. and the Freedom Riders had to ask those in power for a permit before going to Selma? The ways for the power or even a well-intentioned ordinance such as this to be abused in the wrong hands are countless, and it's not hard to foresee Franklin turning into ground zero for free speech issues were this to pass. I don't think that's what we want. I don't think we want people getting arrested for gathering peacefully. And even if the intended target are people like white supremacists who plague Tennessee, the truth is they should be able to assemble and express themselves also. Free speech is the most American of all rights, as is free protest, and I ask this board to think long and hard about the long-term ramifications before casting any vote that could potentially restrict it, either intentionally or unintentionally. Franklin's diversity of thought, culture, and expression is a virtue, and we should be nurturing it, not stifling it. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on to item number one, consideration procurement award to TriStar Energy LLC of Nashville, Tennessee on a cost-plus basis in the estimated total amount of $14,600 per year for supply and delivery of winterized diesel fuel to multiple supply sites during a term of award. And we'll let you know before we make any other comments that this will be deferred during the voting session tonight. So just FYI, but we're still going to talk about it. Any comments about it?
I don't know anything about that.
I think there's still some contract language or something.
I don't know. Do you know something about it?
Yes, the contract is not done. So it's been requested.
It's January 14th, '20. Okay, item two, reports in regards to issuance of Series 2019 C and D general refunding, obligation refunding bonds.
So we had presented this at the most recent Budget and Finance Committee and positive results from that refinancing, both in terms of savings, but also a better structure for us long-term in terms of managing risk and also providing for opportunities to fund other needed projects in the community. And the committee requested that we present that outcome to the full board, and so Christine's going to do that now.
Thank you. We wanted to, we were asked to present a summary of the refinancing to the full board at a work session. This was a refinancing that was approved by the full board on September the 24th by resolution to refinance bonds that were issued in 2007 by the Public Building Authority. The 2007 bonds were $20 million that were issued as variable rate bonds. They did have a interest rate swap attached to that bond issue, as well as a 2010 bond issue, that was a taxable bond issue issued under the Recovery Program for road improvements, along with it has an interest rate subsidy from the federal government that's subject to annual appropriation. So both of those bond issues had some uncertainties to them in planning our future debt service payments. We did move forward. The state of Tennessee did approve the refinancing, as well as Moody's and Standard &amp; Poor's, they did assign their highest bond ratings of AAA to both bond issues. At the same time, they also affirmed the AAA ratings on our existing bonds. We moved forward with accepting competitive bids for the refunding on November the 5th. Mayor Moore and our city administrator observed the competitive bid process on November the 5th. For the first refinancing, we did receive eight competitive bids. Bank of New York Mellon was the lowest rate at 1.737%. Thirty minutes later, we did receive also eight competitive bids for the Series D bonds. And Robert W. Baird was the firm with the lowest interest rate of 2.0568%. And at the same time, the city terminated the interest rate swap agreement. We didn't negotiate a discount of 8% from the fair market value of the interest rate swap agreement. Once we had accepted these low bids and we had set the termination of the interest rate swap agreement, we were able to restructure the principal on the underlying, on the debt. I mean, our new bond issue, we are going to begin paying principal in 2022, which is earlier than 2025, and we'll also pay the bonds off five years earlier in 2032. When you compare the debt service that we now have locked in, that we can plan for, we have, and compare that to the debt service that was projected on the old bonds, the city has debt service savings of $3,136,284, as well as there's now flexibility in those years, 2033 to 2037, in which we had planned to be paying debt service on the 2007 bonds. We then moved forward with planning the closing, and the bonds closed successfully on November the 20th. And we'd be glad to answer any questions you might have. We appreciate your support.
I like the succinctness of the comments.
They like to save money.
Okay, let's go to demonstration of online capital investment tracking tool. And I just had someone give me a speaker's card for this. It's not an item that's on our agenda here. And if there's time at the end of the meeting, I'll recognize her to make a comment, but we're moving on. We got the meeting started and we're going.
So one of the things our staff team has been working on is some ways to present to you all and to the public our progress on capital investment projects. So our IT team working with engineering and our staff has been working on a way to display those easily understandable, give you background on the project, the cost of the project and where it is in the development timeframe. And so we wanted to share with you tonight sort of a prototype of what we would like to bring forward, get some feedback from you, and show you the work that's been done by our staff team. Vernon Paul, Amy, whoever wants to take it away from here.
No, thank you, Eric. And Amy has, Amy has done a wonderful job putting this dashboard together, and it is now live on our website. So we'll let her walk through a couple of projects, let you see how it looks, feels. And then the other part of this is it's our intention that at every CIC meeting, that we'll pull that up and hone in on a project to talk about where we are in terms of funding and time in the critical path forward to complete a project. Amy?
Thank you for having me, members of the board. I just want to direct you to the screens to show you how you can, or any of the public can get to the new CIP dashboard. So as you can see here, we have the City of Franklin homepage, and you can go to the The very top button here is City Capital Projects. We have Capital Projects Dashboard, which will take you directly to the dashboard. Here we have all our current projects, and this is going to be updated on a rolling basis. So we, right now, we have all active projects, but soon we will have completed projects as well as we complete these projects. We can also filter them out by different types, for example, facilities, parks, stormwater, transportation, or water management, or the phase of design, right-of-way, or construction. Up here we have at the top is our, it's kind of hard for you guys to see, and I apologize for that, but as you select these projects, I'll select the municipal services complex improvements. You can see the budget, the dollars spent to date up here, and then the board approval budget. And also, it will highlight what phase we are in. So we've already, for this project, we've already completed the design and the right-of-way phase, and we're in the construction phase. And you can see all of this as well here in our pop-up box, and as well as you can get more information, such as the project manager and the beginning, the ending of the project limits, the approved budget, the dollars spent, board approval date, construction start date, project updates. We also have a project link on most of these, and also the last person to edit them. As you can see, it does highlight. Another one we will highlight today for you is our East Buchanan Drive Roundabout. And as you can see, the map automatically goes to it as you select it. And again, it gives you additional information. Here is one that has a project link. If you click on that, it will go directly to the project link of the project. Are there any questions about the capital dashboard?
So this would really be all approved projects. It's not meant to give ones that are in the, we've identified but may have not been selected or funded. So this, yeah, this shows you the ones that you've approved and identified in the 10-year capital plan. So, and it gives progress as they're moving along. And again, we'll update them regularly, refer to it every month when we come to the Capital Investment Committee, but it's there all the time for folks to look into and get updates on projects they're interested in and have some ability to have contact with folks who are managing the project if they have specific questions.
Another piece of this, as we go forward, our team wants to deliver projects as quickly as possible and under budget. And this is one tool at this point in time that shares where we are in a project with you, it's the approving body that funded these projects, but it also shows that to our citizens. Our team is going to work, continues to work in getting into more details of how we can move various projects along quicker. For example, when working with T-DOT and federal funding and meeting all the requirements and steps that they put upon us, how can we deliver faster? And projects faster and within budget. It's not easy, but this is a tool that helps shows the public what we're doing and when things are going to be completed. Paul?
Thank you all. Great job.
Ready to move on? Item four.
Good job.
Thank you.
Amy really worked hard on this. And the staff team drove her nuts with, well, what about this? What about that? And she's been great to work with, and that's kind of talent we have in-house. This was done entirely by your staff.
This is really needed, and anything we can do to move on T-DOT too.
Thank you. And it just wasn't me, it was the entire IT team and engineering, but thank you.
Thank you.
Put that under a link called "What Have You Done for Me?"
I do think we will, I do think we will put one of those on the homepage. Those are billboards, those top items that you see right away. I'm going to ask us to create one that says Capital Project Updates, so you can just one click and you're there. So we'll do that as well.
Just put a little code in there.
We'll work that in there, too.
Okay, how about presentation on proposed Parkland Impact Fee Ordinance Amendments?
So we've had the parkland, updated Parkland Impact Fee Ordinance in place for going on, over a year, and have had a lot of experience with it in doing that, working with the development community, et cetera, and our staff's work with it. And so there are some elements we'd like to revisit and talk to you about that we think are true to the intent of it, but may make it work a little better in practice that we'd like to bring forward to you tonight. And really, the intent tonight is to share those with you. We don't have an ordinance drafted yet, but want to get, share it with you and get your feedback so that we can bring something forward after the first of the year that would enhance our Parkland Impact Fee Ordinance even more than we already have. It's doing what we would like it to do, but we think these tweaks can improve it even more. So let our team that's been working on that talk about it.
Thank you, Eric. And just to echo what he said, we've had it in place in this recent version for almost a couple of years, and it's accomplished in many ways what we wanted it to accomplish. However, we do interact a lot with the design professionals and development community, and they've pointed out some things that have caused some concern that we want to share with you. And I'm going to start that and then turn it over to Alyssa, Lisa, and Kevin, and let us walk through it. It's only about six slides. One of the concerns, and I'm going to start, one of the concerns that has been raised that the current ordinance requires the entire Parkland fee obligation to be paid before the first plat is recorded, which is before the first building permit is even issued. And in some of the developments we have, based on the number of dwelling units, it could range from a couple hundred thousand dollars to several million dollars. And that puts a financial burden on the financing for any project. So the first thing that we're going to talk about or share with you that's going to be, we're proposing, is that we collect 25% of that entire amount that we had talked about is used for community-type park expansion, that that's collected before the first plat is recorded. So that way, we can program that money into our capital improvement plan for expanding parks. The remainder of the fees will be collected with each building permit. And you may know, or maybe not, our road impact fees are presently and always have been collected on a proportionate basis with each building permit. So from an accounting standpoint, that will be much more efficient for us, also release the burden on developers upfront. They're still going to pay the amount, but we'll collect that 25% upfront. The other piece of that is, is that since we would be collecting the majority on the building permit with the building permits, we would remove that requirement that we have to spend or allocate that money within that 10-year time period because it would be even more burdensome to try to collect that or keep track of that. So that would be the first and major change. Alyssa?
Thank you, members of the board. Thank you, members of the board, for having me tonight. The next item that we're going to propose, the next amendment, is, under the current ordinance, the Parkland amenities that are eligible for offsets are required to be constructed within two years of the final plat or the issuance of the first building permit. We are proposing that we restructure that so that the amenity comes with the adjacent phases of the development, meaning if the development has the amenity adjacent to phases one, three, and five, we want to see that amenity come through with phases one, three, and five. When they're working on two, four, six, however many others they have, we're going to let them focus on building the residential components and just make sure that that parkland comes in during the same phases that the residential is going to come in and that impact is going to come in.
Could I add on that a little bit?
Absolutely.
And as you know, some neighborhoods, some subdivisions, Alad Park or West Haven, has dozens of phases or sections. And in some of what we found, because the current requirement says two years, if the amenity was going to be in, say, the back or middle or different section where they weren't commencing work in a subdivision, they may not get to it for a few years. So this way, we can ensure the amenity is going to be constructed when it's within or adjacent to a phase that's going to start to be developed.
So next, I'll move on to the way, the proposed changes we have to the current offsets that are available. The first type of offset we have available is for private amenities. These are amenities that are only going to be open to residents of those communities. They're not open to the public. Under the current ordinance, they're calculated at 25% of the actual cost to construct the private park and recreation amenity. They can collect up to the total Parkland Impact Fee Obligation, and it includes the value of the land as predetermined in the ordinance. What we're proposing is changing the value that they can collect, which would be calculated at 50% of the total Parkland Impact Fee Obligation, but they would only be able to collect up to 50% of the total obligation. And the remaining 50% will be divided. 25% will be used for community-type parks. The other 25% would be used for neighborhood-type parks in the quadrant where the development occurred, and we are not going to be considering land costs. So this is only going to be eligible construction costs, not the value of the land. The next type of offset that we have are private amenities that are open to the public. These are amenities which are open to the public, but the HOA maintains, or an outside agency maintains, but the city does not maintain. And currently, under the ordinance, they're calculated at 100% of the actual cost to construct if it's included in the Comprehensive Parks and Recreation Master Plan, or calculated at 75% if it's not included in the Comprehensive Parks and Recreation Master Plan. Under the current ordinance, in both of those scenarios, we're considering the construction costs and the value of the land as it's set in the ordinance. What we're proposing is that, under the new, it would be calculated at 75% of the total Parkland Impact Fee Obligation, so they would be eligible to collect up to 75% of their total obligation. And the remaining 25% would be used for community-type parks. And we would, in this scenario, we would value the land and the construction costs together to equate to that 75%.
Can we ask some questions now? Or?
Go ahead.
So really, I guess I'm confused about this one because if it's open to the public, then why would they need to pay 25% to produce a community-type park? To me, that's, I don't get that. Why? Because if they're welcoming people into their development where they have a park or an amenity that's open to the public, to me, that should be 100% offset, not 75, to let 25 go into where it can be used by the whole community because that's what they're already providing. It seems backwards.
Now, it's a very, very good question and one that maybe needs a little refreshing. In our earlier conversations, going back a couple years, we concluded, rightfully so, that many of our citizens use community-type parks for organized activities. So we wanted to ensure that we could expand community-type parks in conjunction with neighborhood-type parks. And that's why that initial 25% comes immediately when, before the first plat is recorded. You're going to see a scenario later on in the presentation that when a development has over 350 or more dwelling units, they will have the option to collect or have an offset for 100% because they would need to build a park, a minimum of five acres in size, and we'll explain that. But we recognized earlier on that our citizens, their children, use community parks, and they're more expensive for the city to buy land and expand.
Right. And real quick, but if you think about Chestnut Bend and the walking trails there, to me, having access to that because it being so close to downtown, because it being by the Harpeth River, and one could say eventually crossing over the Harpeth to get to Harlinsdale, to me, that's a pretty big share. And if that were a current proposed development, I think that warrants 100% offset. I don't think there's 350 houses in Chestnut Bend. I know it's already established, but if you peel back and you go back, that's a pretty big, we're welcoming you into our neighborhood to walk through our trails, and I think that's public.
Right. And that's a great example to where it would equate to a five acre, so they most likely would receive 100%. What we're talking about and an example of this could be to where they're building a playground with no additional parking areas, no additional restrooms, it's used by the neighborhood, so that extra 20, they would get 75% to build what they're going to do. But 25% then would go down the road to that community park to where it might build a connection of a trail system, or it actually might build part of a ball field to where those groups are using it.
Well, and I think this is very vague, and maybe once you drill down, it would, this is, it sounds very subjective now, because I could say, you can come to my park, you probably don't want to, but I'm going to say you're welcome, just so I can save, you know what I mean? So I don't know. I think it probably needs a little bit more bullet points.
We'll get to that as we get to the end of the presentation.
Do you want to make a comment, Alderman Peterson?
I do, but whenever we get to the end, probably it's more appropriate. But, you know, if the homeowner association is going to be taking care of this and maintaining it and everything, why would they want other people to come in there? I mean, there might be times whenever they would be happy for them to, but I can think of some other times whenever, if they are having to totally build it and maintain it, they would not necessarily want other people to come in. And I noticed that that was one of the...
And that's the reason that when it's considered a private amenity, even though it might be open, and you see that a lot in the HOAs today, you might have a playground that anybody can walk up to, but they can't walk up to the pool. So they're really looking at that from a private standpoint, but at least providing that 75% so they can build something, not just small, but they can get that offset back and they build something meaningful. But that 25% might be, still stays within that quadrant to make something for the community. So that could be a trail system, or it could be an additional to a larger playground that's needed in that community.
Could follow up on that, though. Remember, whenever we had the park study done, one of the things that was, that we were lacking at a great percentage was neighborhood... were lacking at a great percentage was neighborhood parks.
Correct.
In other words, where people could walk there in five or 10 minutes. And those are the things that we don't have.
And, and we're hoping that the reason we're going to this is if you can get 75% back and you invest it in, you want to invest it in that community park that's in that neighborhood. So that, that's the goal. You, now, you're about to hear to where it'll be 100% that they want the city to come in. So this will be the larger, but...
Alyssa?
Yes, thank you, Alyssa. Our final offset level would be 100% reimbursement, and this is going to be for communities that have a density of 350 dwelling units or greater. Currently, the land and improvements must be dedicated to the city. It has to be a minimum of five acres, and we would reimburse 100% of the parkland impact fees. We're still going to have the land and improvements be dedicated to the city, so those are going to become city assets and city property. It has to be a minimum of five acres, but we would also accept major trail connections. So if it's less than five acres, but it makes a major connection on either a parks plan, a transportation plan, any of the city plans, we are willing to consider that for 100%. And you would be able to get that 100% reimbursement back.
And kind of just to follow along with what we're saying, you know, there are more small neighborhood parks in the city, I swear, that are owned by the county than are owned by the city because the city has had five-acre minimum, you know, for anything. And really, as I say, there, there, there are several county-owned parks that are inside the city that would really be a great neighborhood park for not only the people that they're, they're still around now, but I mean, for the new developments coming in. But, you know, we won't take anything less than five acres.
Allow me, thank you, Alyssa, and to draw your attention to not, not only the chart, but also the line on the bottom that talks, that says, "Land eligible for offset is based on density." And the current formula that we use, and it'll be updated when the county does a reassessment of, of property, is that 59.41 units equate to one acre of improved parkland. So while that, why that is important, and it, it kind of addresses what Alderman Blatton had said, is that any development that comes in, while they may want to donate more land to the city for a public type of amenity, they're only eligible for an offset of what's created by the density within the development. For example, if there are 69 dwelling units and they want to donate a couple acres of land for park, for parkland or even greenway trails, for the land piece, they're only eligible one acre. That's where that 350 unit, dwelling unit comes into play, where a developer would be eligible to collect 100% of their obligation because 350 units equates to five acres of land, and then, of course, the improvement value that's associated with it. So that's where that 100% comes into play. Otherwise, that would be the limit that they would be able to collect off the land value. Of course, there's the improvement of the amenities that, that would come, come with it. And furthermore, and maybe trying to address a little bit what Alderman Peterson has just raised, is that while we want to create this ordinance, the intent is that a new development, residential development, only is contributing, it contributing its proportionate share to maintain the current ratio of improved parkland and greenway trails in our city, not for create anymore, just to create, to collect funds that we can make improvements and maintain that ratio that exists at the time the development is approves. Granted, there is other areas, and for one example, we're working with the Franklin Special School District to improve some of their land that will certainly be available to all of our city residents. And that's an example of using different funds to help get that done.
Go ahead, Alderman Bonhill.
So if I'm, look at this right, and you've got 70 units for one acre, however many units are in the city now, that should, divided by 70, that should be the number of acres of parkland we should have now. Do we have that?
Yes. We have a formula that we created a little over, around three years ago when we started on this initiative, and we'll update that, look at the private park or the public parkland, not historic parks, public parks and greenways, acreage, and then we'll, we'll update that formula when the county reassesses the value of land.
Alderman Berger.
Finish your claim?
Yeah.
Okay. What, I can't remember what the numbers were, but what is the ratio of parkland that we have per resident versus what is nationally, or where, where do we fall in that line again? So I don't think we've talked about that for a couple of years.
So currently, we have, if you include all of our parkland, so all of our park system, yes, all historic, then we're at close to 11 acres per thousand. The national now is, is six, when we were doing the study with the master plan then and five years ago, it was at six acres per thousand. They have raised that now to 10. So we're right in line with it by doing what we're doing.
Okay. Now, how about the other parks as far as you, when count, the parks, the interactive parks for our residents, for the kids and, you know, I mean...
This includes everything.
Other than, yeah.
Yeah, so that includes all of our park system, all 900 and something acres.
Okay.
Mm-hmm. But parkland is not, we do not use parkland fees, the fees associated with this to historic parks because you have other funding mechanisms, the hotel motel, there may be potential facilities tax, there's more appropriateness or toward those, whereas this is to where you're looking at community or neighborhood parks, and in that park's master plan, it's what we always refer back to, is that the deficit was regarding connectivity and neighborhood parks, and that's where this is coming into play. What we've seen over the last, and Kevin can share, what we've seen over the last year that's come through is you have a lot of the private has walked through the door and, along with a ratio of public. So you might have, you still have the, the pools that are gated, you might have tennis courts that are, they're proposing, but then they're going to do some areas in their open space for playgrounds and that type thing. So you're seeing a lot, a lot of times, it doesn't fall just under private and doesn't just fall under public. A lot of times with these contracts that we've been bringing before, you see a combination of the two. And that's really what you want to see. We want to be able, if you can, if they can stay, if they can stay in their neighborhood and recreate in some form or fashion, that's the goal.
So, so you're saying we have a deficit in connectivity and in neighborhood, neighborhood parks?
Correct. You want to be able to play where you live.
And the, and part of the reason we updated the ordinance was to provide that connection so that there would be more of a benefit to adding those amenities and getting them either offset or, or contributed to by, by this ordinance. So it's really, it's worked to do that. What these are, some ways to modify it to better align and also address the, the first issue that was talked about, which is it can be a substantial upfront cost and to have some of it upfront and then some, the rest of it spread to match more the development cycle. That, that just seemed to fit a little better. So it's the experience that we've had as, along with the development community as we look at it, and we think these are, these make sense. I think we may want to refine and describe a little more completely some elements of this, but it's really an alignment to help it work more effectively.
And if, and if you don't mind, let me add, the monies can only be used for new parkland, but not maintenance and not historic parks. So any maintenance that we do on any of our parks that we have existing, we cannot expand any of those monies for that purpose. We are trying to expand the park system to keep that ratio. Very important.
Go ahead.
I, I do want to, want to take this opportunity, really just say thank you for having the leadership to adopt this type of, of ordinance, which includes the road impact fee ordinance and the sewer and water ordinances that we have. So we ensure that development is paying its proportionate share to maintain the level of service that we provide our existing residents. Building a place like Franklin doesn't happen by accident, and you can see that throughout the country of other communities struggling just to maintain roads. That's because in large part that they don't ask, have their developments pay their proportionate share to create the existing amenities, in this case, as parks, or road capacity, or sewer and water capacity, both in treatment and, and pipes in the ground. So thank you for, you know, your leadership in allowing us to bring these forward and for our citizens.
I can say one more thing. You know, whenever we're talking about going on a little tour of things for the planning and everything, it would be great to also look at maybe some of the things that have been built or being built on that because we're going to be out and around anyway. So I think, I think that would be very good.
See it real firsthand. Good job. Any other questions? Okay, discussion regarding paid private surface parking facilities.
So one of the things we've seen in the last few years is private parking lots that have gone to become pay ventures. And one of the things we've consistently heard concerns from citizens and visitors about is confusion about where they parked, private tickets they received, and frustration around how that worked. And so that, that's what we, and I ask Vernon and Holland to work a little bit on looking at where those issues are coming from and what we might be able to consider in terms of, of working with those, make those more understandable to the public, and maybe eliminate some of the confusion and frustration that our citizens or our visitors experience. And so we wanted to walk through what, what's the condition now and how we might look at addressing it and get your feedback on that, so.
Thank you. Holland's done a fabulous job in putting together a handful of slides, and it only take her a few minutes to go through them. Really, I'm here because oftentimes I am the recipient of the call from a disgruntled visitor or citizen. So to provide additional feedback of why maybe we want to consider having some requirements in place to avoid confusion. Holland?
And Vernon handed off one of those calls to me. He'd be like, this is a great learning opportunity. And the citizen, the visitor was coming from Philly and wanted to check out Franklin, heard great things about it, ended up parking in, in a private paid parking lot, but paid the wrong kiosk and got a $70 ticket. And he's like, I'm not coming back to Franklin. Parking is awful here, and we really don't want that experience for our visitors, for our citizens. We want to make it as easy as possible for them if they do go and choose to use a private paid parking lot. So I surveyed six private paid parking lots in downtown Franklin. I will focus specifically on four of them, show some of the issues and inconsistencies that we have. And the parking businesses that were, are operating in downtown are Stewart, PMC, and Park Happy. So today, I really want to talk to you about inconsistencies with these surface private paid parking lots and proposed potential regulations. So this first one, we're going to focus on the surface lot between Third Avenue and Fourth Avenue. It's this long rectangular lot that you can see there. So you will, so usually if you want to go into this lot, you're coming in from Third Avenue. There we go. So you're coming in, and on that image on the right, it says, this is a paid lot. It's kind of small, but you can see it pretty well. It has it on the other side, too. And then as you go towards Fourth Avenue, you start seeing these markers on the bottom. They're kind of faded, but they say, hey, this is a paid parking lot, just so you know. But then, as you go closer to Fourth Avenue, it says Park Happy, and it has a stall number too. And so if you're rushed, if you're like, I got to go to lunch or to a meeting, you're not necessarily paying attention to that. So this is where it gets really tricky. So there, in the middle, it has two signs. One is for Park Happy on the left, and then on the right is Stewart. It says, hey, this is two different businesses. You got to pay for the right one. And so on the right, you have the parking kiosk for Stewart. It has a sandwich board sign that says, hey, this is a paid lot. On the left, Park Happy also has that as well, but if you can't really see well, you can't really see like all that small text that has, and it basically at the bottom says, you're going to have to pay $150 fine if, if worse comes to worse. So this can be confusing for people, and this is, this is a case of a visitor who came from Philly. He didn't know that he had paid with the wrong one. So the next one is Generation's Church. It's this little L shape. They have about 10 parking spaces available for paid parking. So on both of the entrances, one on, let's see, there it is, one on Third Street and then one on Fourth Avenue, I believe, yeah. It has a good sandwich board sign, says that you have to pay, you have to go in the paid parking stalls, specifically what the numbers are, what color it is, and it says, no public parking Sundays before noon. So that's like pretty understandable, you go in. But then, when you go to the kiosk, it says, park only in, in those stalls, doesn't specify color, and it says, before 4:00 PM, Monday through Friday. So if you really park here a lot, you can, you can know that you'll be safe after 4:00 PM. Those signs at the front don't necessarily say the same story. They also have markings at each parking spot, and some of them are painted really well, some of them are fading. And then the, my last example is the Fourth Avenue Church of Christ parking lots. We're specifically going to focus on two, the Fifth Avenue lot and the Fourth Avenue lot. So this is right behind Starbucks, and so it's that first entryway. You're going into the alleyway. So this is a view from the street, and you can see that sandwich board sign, it's all the way in the back. So you, you might be able to see it, but you're not going to read it pretty clearly. It does say, this is a paid lot, but doesn't say exactly the, how much it costs. Then on the other side, it says, hey, it's two bucks an hour, just so you know. And there are markings on the, on the, in the stalls like we saw earlier, but then on that other side, that whole parking lot is paid parking, but it isn't specified as well as the alleyway. And so if you're going, let's say if you're going towards Fifth Avenue and you, you're rushing, rushing to your next appointment to lunch, and you don't necessarily see a sandwich board sign, you're probably going to miss paying for it. But if you go, if you park in a little bit further into that alleyway and you're going towards Fifth Avenue, you'll be able to see that sign right there to say, hey, you need to go ahead and pay for it. If you go closer to Fourth Avenue, there is also a sign there, but you'd have to be walking like pretty far into it. So if you're going into one of those shops behind there, you might actually even miss that it is, that alleyway, part of it is paid. And then that, so if you're standing, especially if you're standing from the alleyway, or maybe you parked just right across from there, there is a sign way, 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 way in the back of the parking lot that says, hey, the kiosk is over here to pay. I really had to zoom in on my phone so you could go ahead and see that. And then that kiosk is actually on the exact opposite corner from the alleyway entrance. And so that's, that could be a pretty long walk for people, or people just, you know, might not even see it, give up and say, you know what, I'm, I'll, I'll take the ticket.
Oh, I just want to come here.
Yeah. Yeah, that's a very real possibility. Well, I have one more example. So I didn't even know this was a parking lot at first. So they have a sandwich board sign just right out on that Fourth Avenue lot. That day it was closed lately, and when I've walked past it, it is actually open and visible, and it is closer to the, to the entrance, so it is a little bit more visible. But if that happens, people aren't necessarily going to... But if that happens, people aren't necessarily going to know that that's a paid parking lot. And then, again, way in the back, you have that sign. I also had to zoom in a lot on my phone to get that image. And then, that kiosk is actually right behind a dumpster. And so, it's actually hidden. If you go in and see, you really, you gotta walk all the way in. And so, if I'm visiting Franklin, I will probably go ahead and park, maybe see that sign and go, "Well, I don't see a kiosk," and just walk on over to Fourth Avenue and go on with my day. So, across the board, parking is $2 per hour, which is pretty good compared to our friends in the north in Nashville. But however, if people do fail to pay to park, or if they don't put that ticket on the dashboard, they say that they, that they warn you ahead of time that you need to do it, but some people will forget. Or if, if you go over your time, you can get a ticket of up to $150. And that's with Park Happy. The others go up to $60. But you can see there, if, if they're not paid in time, it just increases dramatically. And again, it goes on the city. If, if they're getting these tickets, they're, they're not necessarily thinking that it's the, it's, it's the business that's running it. They're thinking of, of the city first. So, we would really like to have regulations and a permitting process, so that when people go into any paid lot, that they know, that they know it's a paid lot, they know where, where the kiosks are, and they, they know what to do with that ticket. So, we want to be able to clearly communicate where they, they are located. We want to provide appropriate signage with consistent messages. And we want signage that's consistent in size and placement, so that all across the board, you know it is a private paid parking lot. So, with that, do you all have any questions?
Alderman Brerker.
This is long overdue.
And then, Alderman Speedy after that.
Long overdue. Thank you so much for doing this, because I've had numerous people complain to me that this is so confusing. And I go to a board meeting at Franklin Classical School every now and then, and once in a while, if I can't find parking, I'll try to come over, park it in this area, but if I can't, and then walk over. One time, I did the paid parking. It's very confusing over there. And we need consistency. It's not fair to the residents of our city. It's not fair to our visitors either. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alderman Speedy.
I guess before we go down the path of regulating them, have we approached the three operators?
Exactly.
If they're willing to propose some self-improvements and self-regulation?
We, we have, have, have not, except that we've shared initially, when we started receiving these calls, that they need to provide some more clarity. And as you can see, they put up some additional signage. We also have to remember that we're in the historic preservation overlay and maintaining the character. We don't want to have sign proliferation. So, having, and if we did went further and became more, tried to have more dialogue with these entities, as Holland pointed out, we, we found that consistency in how the signage is displayed, how the parking spaces are laid out and identified is key, because you saw, for example, Generations Church had what, spaces one through 11 and 34 through 47, but not on Sundays in the AM. And then, you saw the fading of the, the paint on, on the surface of the asphalt. And keep in mind, those parking lots have only been there for a year or two, and that signage is deplorable. So, while certainly if that's the, the guidance you want to provide us to go talk to each of the three entities, we can do that. But having a permit, annual permit program that has the guidelines in place for signage will make it more consistent for us to keep an eye on.
So, while we may not have talked about these specifics, we have shared complaints with both property owners and operators. And, you know, I, I think we've seen very limited responses to those, maybe a few signs, but not much else. So, we're glad to talk to them further and talk about these elements, but, you know, I, I think we're trying to get some feedback. If you'd like us to develop a more specific program, and you can give us some feedback on that, and we can do that along the way in that process, too.
Mayor, let me, let's back up just a touch.
Let me just point out who's gonna speak. I'm gonna recognize you, Alderman Branford, then Alderman Blanton.
Okay. Okay, go ahead.
No, no. I recognize you, Alderman Barnhill.
We've got, you've got a private parking lot, paid parking lot, Fourth Avenue Church, the one behind here, I guess they're both, two of them really used to belong to Fourth Avenue Church, and then one more. And we're going to, we're going to regulate the signage put up, and, and how does, how do they, how do they write the ticket? I mean, I go in and I park, and somebody tries to dun me for $70 to park because I'm 15 minutes over. How are they going to collect that money from me?
They ultimately turn you over to a collection agency if you don't pay?
Okay.
I mean, it gets, yeah.
Yeah. So, how did they collect from the guy from Philadelphia? They, they didn't.
They have a, a collection agency to follow up.
That's fine. What I'm saying to you guys, you know, I, I really, I can't believe that we've got, that you have gone to the owners, to Fourth Avenue Church, and to the people who are running those parking lots for them, because Fourth Avenue still owns the parking lots, I'm sure. And you've got no direction or no cooperation from, from that particular entity. And we're out looking at this right here, because I can understand why somebody would pull in, but I don't understand why somebody would pull in past a private parking lot, $2 sign. I mean, these things are everywhere. They're in, they're everywhere. And no one right now goes, I don't believe, very far without seeing something, someplace in some city, somewhere, that would alert them to the fact that these are private and paid parking lots. And $2 an hour is probably not too bad a price. I don't, you know, I smile when I say that. I don't park there, because I'm not gonna pay $2 an hour to park. But, well, just not. But that's not a bad price to pay, and I'm just not sure that we've gone, and if you say you have, that's fine. Go with this right here, and we can, we'll work on this. But let's don't think we've gotten to the point where the owners and the operators understand what's happening here, that we're going to regulate them to the point, we're going to require them to put whatever signs that we're wanting to regulate up, and make sure that the public understands all that's happening in these parking lots. Is that what we're, is that what we're saying?
We're not getting into how much they charge an hour. That's their choice.
Hold on, I'm gonna say, I don't know.
Just to be clear, that's not what this is about. This is about confusion and people being hit with a $60 ticket or more because of the way it, it escalates. So, when that happens is when we get the very upset calls from our residents or from our visitors. And some of it is a very understandable confusion when you see signs pointing one way and one right next to each other, like the examples we showed you. And what we're saying is, are there ways we can work with them to establish something? And you have to provide some standard form to communicate that to the public. And we don't have all the answers yet, but we'd like to get your guidance on if you'd like us to develop a regulatory or a system, a framework, to help make more understandable signage and identification of where people pay, and differentiating paid spots from other spots, reserved spots.
Alderman Branford.
Well, I think that's what I wanted to sort of give guidance on, because we talked about three specific private lots right now, but I see the potential of more. And there's probably, there, there are six? Okay. Are there others that could potentially be? Yes. So, I think somehow, we need to create a communication stream to whatever that is. Is it a, you know, downtown business association or whatever, to put the word out once we get to a degree of clarity or steps? And then, have those individuals come in, or we approach them, or get input from them. I think we need to create an educational part of this, is that we're not trying to hurt your business, and we want our visitors, and you want the visitors to come back. You want the people to continue to use your lot, and we need to create win-win situation. So, my advice would be to let's, let's create, whatever we create here, let's open our doors, let's invite people, not just three, not just six, whomever use these. And you can tell, let a holiday come up, or let a pilgrimage come up. There's all kinds of little spots where people are, are having people to pay to park in their empty lots. So, communicating is very important.
Alderman Blanton.
I just think continuity across the board's probably gonna be very helpful, and it'd probably be great to have a little font that says, "Not owned or operated by the City of Franklin."
That's right.
I mean, just require that, because that's where the confusion comes into play, and make sure that they have contact information visible somewhere there, whether it's on the receipt or the machine. And I do think that it's worth us, if, I mean, there, it's, we have rules for everyone, and I think we probably need to establish some rules, as we've seen this become a problem. But continuity, I think, is key.
Alderman Martin.
Besides the, the confusion about the signs, it just simply takes time to figure it out. And as you said, Holland, when you're in a hurry and you go in one of those lots, I don't park there, but one time, I did go with two women, and they, they didn't know what space they were parking in, and then they had to run over and look at the, at the meter to find out where it was. And then, they moved their car, and they'd already put money in that, you know, it, it was a mess. And so, just remember the time it takes, and anything you can do to make it easier is, is what we need.
I've got Alderman Peterson, then I'll go back to you again after that.
Two, two things have occurred to me. One is, do they have somebody out there parrolling, patrolling the lots the way we have, you know, on our two-hour parking? Or they've gotta have, they've gotta have it much more often than, than we do. I mean, is there, is there a person, in other words? Or do they have a camera? Or what?
They probably all shift in on one guy.
I mean, that, that's clearly how they, they, they make their money, besides splitting the revenues of the paid. But, you know, policing that is, is certainly advantageous to them to, to monitor. The other, the other.
Well, could I, could I say, you know, if you had a parking meter, you can, you could look and see whenever it's off. But, but as I, yeah, no, no, I'm just saying that. But I was just curious as how they were, I, I guess somebody comes by and looks at what's in the window and everything, but as I say, that, that's got to be, but the other thing is, is the city receiving any money from this?
No.
I mean, it's, it's like, it's a, it's taxable, isn't it?
I mean, we collect property tax. We collect property tax on private property. That's the only way that we get, but we're not in that.
To me, but if it's a church that owns it, do they pay property tax?
Yeah, that's true.
No.
Go ahead. And then, I'll recognize Alderman Barnhill after that.
Just another observer, observation. More communication, and this way, visual communication should reduce confusion. And these bad experiences, how many ever we've received, we haven't kept count, that citizens and visitors will have. What we also have observed is that there's plenty of parking within these paid lots. And if we can create a better experience, that'll help people park.
My only other comment, supposedly, we have 200 coming in, 200 parking places. Public parking places probably be paid at the hotel. How will they be regulated?
This is for surface lots. Because you have to, you know, the, a parking garage has its own kind of mechanism to get in and out of, so that, that works differently than these surface lots where it's unclear what's, belongs to who and who you pay, and the confusion doesn't exist because it's self-contained as a parking.
Okay, it may not be.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's still, it's still the same principle and the same.
It's paid parking, but it didn't have the potential for confusion, at least that we've observed to this point, that these have created.
Ms. Mayor, no, we need to move on, but you asked for guidance. Holland and Vernon, you asked for guidance. And I, I want, I want us to pursue this personally, because I think it's long overdue. I do think you need to talk to the entities. That was a given to me. So, I'm glad to hear that somebody brought that up, because I just thought maybe you had, and I shouldn't have taken it for granted. But I, I think that we have to have consistency in signage and the way they're doing business. I don't want, you know, I'm not into overregulation, but we have a disaster here. I personally experienced it, some friends of mine and all that. So, that's the guidance I would give, if you're looking for the guidance. I want you to go ahead with it, but I do also think the board, I've heard, you need to be talking to the entities as well.
Alderman McLendon.
Vice, Vice Mayor McLendon, excuse me. I wonder how much of this is confusion, and how much of it is just people thinking they'd only be there 30 minutes and no one's gonna check in the meantime, and now they're mad. And I wonder how much of this confusion, I mean, it seems like the, the lot owners have the greatest incentive to make sure that they get paid properly, rather than, as Mr. Barnhill said, dunning people with collection agencies. Personally, I think maybe you ought to draft up a particularly onerous ordinance and circulate it among the owners, and tell them that in February, you're bringing it to us. See what happens.
I think he just so drained.
Well, I mean, I, you know, I don't particularly want people who tried to pay, paid the wrong
kiosk, getting bent. But I also don't want, every time we make an ordinance like that, we have to pay someone to enforce it. And so, it, it's like, at some point, it's really not our problem.
It's true.
I mean, I would, I, you, you sign proliferation and, and all that, this, just getting to the point where every month, we're getting asked to make more regulations about something, much of which isn't really our problem. The only reason it became theoretically our problem is because some guy angry from Philadelphia called. That makes it our problem?
No.
It's his problem, and it's the parking lot owner's problem. But as soon as we make an ordinance, it is our problem. So.
A sign that says it isn't our lot would help a lot.
Well, I'm not saying I don't want the phone calls. I'm saying, I'm saying it's not our problem with or without the signage, until we make it our problem by making a regulation that we have to enforce.
Perception is reality.
Yeah, there you go.
No, no, not in this case.
Well, in their case.
That guy called, he, he probably called more than just you. He probably called a lot of people mad.
He's not alone, though, Dino. He's not alone.
Well, I mean.
Yeah, this isn't based on one situation.
That's fine. Okay, well, how many complaints about something that isn't our problem, does it take until we say, "Okay, we'll make it our problem"? 10? 50?
It reflects back on us, though.
I, your point is, is well-taken. The purpose of our presentation here is to share the extreme frustration of the people that, that did call us. And when we looked, as you saw in some of the illustrations, is, can it be improved for a reasonable person that's on their way to a meeting, to meet friends, that can, can define where they are parking and which kiosk to pick?
With all due, with all due respect, okay? And I value what you do here. I really do. But you literally sent someone out to take pictures of something that isn't our problem.
Oh, it is.
It isn't our, what, I would venture to say that the vast majority of people who are going to these parking lots pay without problem and comply, and we never hear from them. We are literally preparing to legislate something that makes it our problem, based upon what is likely to be a small minority of people who can't figure out a paid parking lot, signage or not, or who didn't bother to do it, and who lot, signage or not, or who didn't bother to do it, and who are now just mad because they got a $75 bill. This, every month, we make, we get asked to make another regulation. And this one really isn't our problem. And it doesn't matter how many phone calls people make. It's still not our problem.
Alderman.
I would like, then, Dana, I don't disagree with that, because frankly, I hate making regulations. It seems, you're absolutely right. We keep making more and more regulations. But this is a problem, and it reflects back on the City of Franklin, even though we don't own this and we don't operate it. It reflects poorly back on us. I have heard this over and over again. I experienced this myself. And I, I think it's very, it's all over the board. There's no consistency. There is no easy way. And most of the time when people are looking for parking spaces, they've got to get somewhere. They've got to get to court. They've got to get to an appointment. They have to get down to meet somebody for a lunch meeting or whatever it is.
None of that is remotely our problem.
No, I'm not saying that is our problem. But what it does, it does reflect.
You really have to justify making this our problem.
No, it reflects poorly back on the city. So, in order not to own this as our problem, I would ask that we talk to the entities. Tell them we need consistency in signs, because we are getting a lot of input. I can get you some more input if you like. I've got a number of people. And find out that if you, if you can take time with them and explain the situation to them, and tell them we need consistency in signs. Whether we want to regulate it or not, I don't really care. I think we need to communicate with them. We need to communicate with them. We need to tell them the problem. They will not know about the problem if we don't, if we don't communicate this to them. So, I think something needs to be done. And maybe what we can do is start slowly, start there, see what kind of action we can get, and then go from there and come back to the board.
I do want to note complaints have been shared with all of these entities. This is not like they've not heard this complaint. We have shared these, these complaints.
The inconsistency out here is, is just across the board. And, and you're right, Holland. You can't read, you can't even see the stuff marked. So, maybe they like, maybe they like the fact that, okay, maybe they like the fact that people don't pay that, and then they get to fine them $150. Maybe they like that better.
All right. If you look, if, real quick, Park Happy, up there on the left.
You're not very happy.
If anybody can read that sign, if that is instructions about how to deal with this.
Good luck.
You know, that is not appropriate.
Yeah.
All right, we're going to move on.
We beat that to death, didn't we?
Item six is irrigation metering structure.
So, something we've met about several times in the last year or so.
This is our problem.
And what we'd like to bring back to you is a specific approach to this. One of the things we talked about was the winter averaging, but also recognition that use patterns do change by season of year, and that we might want to provide some allocation on top of that and a structure. So, we, we did a little more follow-up on that, and also have some examples of some other utilities and how they've approached the winter averaging methodology. And we'll walk you through that with the time that we have tonight. So, take it away, Michelle.
All right. So, thank you. I'm going to start off here. Thank you, Eric. Tonight, we're going to just review our existing rate structure, talk about the proposed rate structure that Michelle and I just wanted to present to you all as a starting point based on our research, show you some examples from other utilities in the area, and kind of discuss some of the next steps, and have an open discussion as you see fit. So, our existing rate structure, I apologize, I'm losing my vision. On, on the winter side, we have an inclining rate structure, as you know, to kind of capture the costs associated with larger demands, generally associated with, with irrigation. As part of that, that water rate structure, we also have an impact fee that's to pay for near and long-term investments by the city. And this, this impact fee is based on a single-family unit equivalent that's, that's translated into meter size at 350 gallons a day. So, you look at a monthly, monthly basis, that's 10,500 gallons for a 30-day month. And on the sewer side, we have a declining rate structure. And the declining rate structure is intended to acknowledge that in the summertime, we, we may have some outdoor water usage. So, if the volume goes up, then that volume can be, the idea is that it may be associated with irrigation, so therefore, it's not getting back to the sewer system. So, on the sanitary sewer side, this is what, based on the research Michelle and I have worked through, this is what we're proposing at, at this point. We base the, the winter, so the winter average would be based on months consistent with our MPDS permit. I think we talked about that last time. Our permit, winter permit months include November through the end of April. The summer volume for sanitary sewer be equal to the lesser of either the metered water or the winter average plus 30%. And we'll get into that here in a second. Because the declining rate structure is intended to acknowledge outdoor watering, we would suggest that that be eliminated. And then, of course, we would have to perform a rate structure to make sure that we're continuing to be equitable to not only ratepayers, but recovering the appropriate amount of dollars. So, so that's the, the sanitary sewer rate proposal. So, we go to the next slide. This is with respect to the, the water rate structure. There are, it's really one element here, but modify the inclining rate based on the, the volume anticipated in the impact fee, which again, goes back to that 350 gallons a day, or 10,500 gallons per month. So, therefore, we would, we would go to the highest tier of water usage after 10,000 gallons a month. And then, again, perform a rate analysis to, to make sure that we're, A, recovering enough, and B, being equitable to, to our ratepayers. So, Michelle's going to kind of jump into a couple other things with respect to neighboring utilities and the next steps. Did anyone have any questions or thoughts on these initial sets of slides?
Something really to think about.
Mm-hmm. Sure.
Yep, understand.
What would you say is the average, I want to say, am I probably, five people, about 11,000, 12,000 gallons? Is that about the average number of gallons used?
The average number of gallons used per household is, is less than 6,000 gallons a month. So.
About a shower.
Yeah. And, you know, there, we have some customers that use tens of thousands of gallons a month at a residential property, others that remain really stable throughout the entire year. So, it's all based on what your, your needs are, what your lifestyle is. So, it's, you can't, it's difficult to often predict. So. Okay. So, I guess, Michelle, if you want to jump.
Suggest is that we'll go ahead and listen to the presentation, and, and then we'll bring it back another time.
Okay. Sure.
Okay. So, we, we looked at some examples from some other utilities, and we, we've kind of talked about this slide a little bit before in our last presentation. So, there's some surrounding areas in middle Tennessee that do the winter pricing model. In Mount Juliet, they take an average from January through April. Metro takes an average from January to March, and then adds a 30% maximum sewer charge. So, they'll be billed up to 30% more for that. Murfreesboro takes November to March and caps that at 20% more, so similar. Brentwood takes a November, November to February average, and then White House takes a November to March, and then takes out the lowest and highest month as those outliers. Let's see. So, the next steps would be to work with, so getting guidance from you, the next steps for us would be to work with the revenue management, finance, and IT to develop a billing methodology. That infrastructure needs to be in place. I don't, I don't imagine it being difficult.
Go ahead and finish.
Okay. I don't imagine it being difficult, but it'll be something that we'll need to work through. Mark and I would need to work through crafting language for, to change Title 18, and then to be incorporated and voted on by you. And then, we would engage our rate consultants either this year or potentially next year to perform a rate analysis, to look at recommendations based on potential revenue impacts that we see.
So, you did a five-year rate framework that's been adopted. We've done, year one, we're in year two now. Next year, when you do budget, you'll adopt. We would propose likely rates for years three and four of that. We would factor in this structure with that. We've done some really rough numbers of potential financial impact. It's not huge, but it's something that we want to, we want to assess, and as we set those rates, factor that in as best we can. This always fluctuates a little bit with an individual year and weather and some of those other elements. But that would be something we would work in, so.
All right. We'll bring this back to another one. Do you have a question, Vice Mayor?
As a matter of paradigm, I, as a matter of paradigm analysis, I think I favor the winter averaging. What I want to know is, if everybody just did the same thing, and we imposed winter averaging, say, November to February, or November to March and kick out the high and low, or one of those models, what would the impact on our revenue be if we did that all at once? And if it was, if it was kind of a big hiccup, what would it look like to step that in over a couple of years? That mean, that's, because I'm just not convinced that, that the metering is ever going to really address the problem.
When I, and I think that's where we're headed. We're headed to a winter averaging.
Okay.
But our recommendation is to have some factor on top of that. The Murfreesboro or the Metro approach, which is a 20 or 30% layer on top, because there are different usages in the hotter months.
Okay.
That are not just irrigation.
So be it. I can live with that. I just think that that's sort of, that, that just seems fair to me, and I think the numbers will bear that out. I just want to know if we can afford it. Like, could we just, if we snapped our fingers and said, do it, what would actually happen to the revenue?
We can give you a sense of that.
Okay.
We, we've.
We've run some rough numbers.
Correct. Right. One, one of the things that we do need to consider, though, is if behavior changes with the customers, which it may, and may not considerably as well, but we need to look in the past to see how they reacted. Because right now, the rate structure, they're, they may behave differently now the way the rate structure is versus a winter pricing model. So.
All right.
We'll see you.
Thank you.